I need to give evidence, his thumper here. He may need to keep this crowd quiet. Oh, sweet. Have you got which agenda item?
I'll be ready to go. I go exercise at 10:00. 10 to 10. Oh, I don't. I need to. Oh, you can't.
Well, there he is.
Hello.
How you doing? Back from the south.
Yeah.
You had a good trip?
Good.
Looks like you're out in the sun, man. Good. Yeah. It was, you know, I mean, it was a little tedious because we went over and spent the first hour.
Spent that time.
But I was patient, so. But it went well, and then the EMS.
Shall we do it? We were waiting.
We decided to. They want to read.
Good afternoon. The time, oh, sorry. Thanks for coming. Anybody got a good joke while we turn the air? Are we live? All right, the time is now 4:01 on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. I would like to call to order this regularly. Regular. Regular meeting of the Grand County Council. All council members are present, as well as Chris Baird, Dylan. Crystal White, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? It starts with an "I."
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, the approval minutes. Mary?
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the minutes of January 16th, 2018, June 19th, 2018, November 20th, 2018, March 5th, 2019, March 11th, 2019, March 19th, 2019, and March 20th, 2019. And authorized chair, sign all associated dockings.
Motion made by. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Terry Morse. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously?
Aye.
Great. Next up, ratification of payment of bills. Right. The Grand County bills to be approved for 4/2, 2019. Total bills, $573,425.56. Total payroll, $254,662.20. Total bills and payroll, $828,051.76. Motion made by Rory Paxman?
Second.
Seconded by Terry Morse. Any further discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Greg Halliday?
Aye.
Jalen Hawks?
Yes.
Mary McGann?
Yes.
Curtis Wells?
Aye.
Terry Morse?
Aye.
Rory Paxman?
Aye.
Adam Clapper?
Yes.
Elected, oh, sorry. General Counsel reports and future considerations. Want to start us off, Greg?
Yeah, on the 20th of March, I attended the museum meeting. Went pretty good. Museum was given a large endowment, which is going to help. Help the museum immensely. The 30th of March, they had a members' party to visit the new museum. I was there, and so was Ruth, representing the county. Looks, looks pretty good, and I think that will, that will help when they, when they get everything moved into it. On the 21st of March, there was going to be a local emergency preparedness committee meeting. That was postponed. Don't know why. It was just postponed. And the meeting for the 27th of March was suspended. I don't have any, don't have any notes on it for some reason. Anyway, that's all I got.
Yep. Jalen?
I attended the Association of Local Governments Board meeting. Pretty long meeting, but there's really not much to report at this point. The Moab Area Responsible Recreation and Tourism Group met. They, they've actually met twice since my last report, but I wasn't able to attend the first one. I did attend the last one, and they have called in different user groups. The first one was the user groups and outfitters of dirt bikes, Jeeps, and ATVs. They were a bit concerned that those groups wouldn't quite get along, but the report is they were very collaborative and were coming up with some great ideas. And the last one was the non-motorized user groups, Trail Mix, BLM, Sand Flats, and Park Service. And there were some pretty good discussions regarding on-the-ground things that they could do. Then I went to the Moab Area Transportation Group meeting for Mary. Apparently, they've gotten UDOT buy-in to fund a transportation study. And maybe Mary knows more about what that is, but my understanding is it's a shuttle system for locals through the valley. Hopefully, the terminus point would be the airport. And they will be coming to both councils to get a letter of approval saying that we support the idea of a study. The last thing I'll report is I have. This isn't technically a meeting, but I've been in an email discussion with the Department of Workforce Services, regional person who's in charge of trying to see that the intergenerational poverty movement gets, keeps going. And as you may recall, this council, through me, has not turned it over to the school district, but the school district has obtained private funding to fund a person for three years to see if she can get that off of the ground. There is a grant that's available. She is willing, this district employee, is willing to write the grant and. Yeah, basically, write the grant. The county would have to be the lead agency because, just because the way the state has structured things. So she, I, at this point, I have not clicked on the link to see what it will fund, nor what kind of match we need. I do know it's 25% match, but I'm hoping it could be an in-kind match. And I have not researched that, and I haven't heard back from her because she has looked into it. Anyway, just keep that on the back burner. We'll see if that's something we want to support or not. That's all I have to report.
On the 20, the 19th, I went through the Watership Partnership, and we had two people applying for some grants. One was the southeastern Utah Health District on proposal for a Vista on a site wastewater geographic database, which would be really great if they got that. And then the other was Mel Creek Phase 4, and the BOM Moab Continued Restoration Work on the Mel Creek Canyon area and other projects. And then the continued, there's continuation on developing a drought plan. So that was on the 20th. On the 21st, I attended Canyon Country Partnership. If I reported on that, that would take a lot of time. A lot of people reported. Probably one of the good news that they had was that there was another leak at the mine, the Gold King Mine in Colorado, but it did not affect San Juan, the San Juan River at all, which was good news. It was pretty busy. We had Mike Mauer from the Governor's Office was there, and he was excited about Emery County land. Everybody was excited about Emery County Public Land Initiative they passed. That was a big talk of the meeting, so that was good. And then on the 27th, I attended a meeting at the BLM to go over the application by the Seven County Coalition to build a road through the East Canyon. And they made the application, they submitted the application two weeks ago, which would be two weeks ago last Wednesday. There's a lot of steps they have to go through. Right before the meeting, we got that notice they wanted to meet with us prior to, well, they gave us a lot of options, but it looked like it's going to be prior to the.
Next council meeting.
Council meeting. Bill Jackson was there, and he said for the county to maintain that road would be a million plus every year. So that's all I have to report. Then Jalen went to my transportation meeting, and I was out of town. I'm thirsty till the end. Thank you.
I've been out of town for three weeks. I just got back a couple hours ago. So just a couple things to report on. Highlights while I was gone was a conference call with Kate Cannon and Marco De Leon, the Chief of Public Affairs for the Park Service, which we discussed the reservation system and the news that, that everyone's heard, that they've decided to take a step back and evaluate some other opportunities to relieve the congestion in the park. And then the other thing I want to mention is an update on the public scrap bin that Joe Kingsley's been so kind to host on his property. He's called that off just because there's members of the public that are, that are, yeah, putting things in there that don't belong, and so it's gotten kind of messy. And so our local county cleanup person has requested to have the bin returned to the company out of Grand Junction. And so we're looking for another place to put the scrap bin. If anybody has any ideas or recommendations, that would be welcome. Okay, good news. That's all I have to report.
Thanks.
I have a number of things. I attended the BLM meeting with, with, with Mary, and also the Transportation Committee meeting and the Watership Partnership. So I won't go into, those were already reported on. Then on the 20th, I attended the Recreational Services District meeting, and they're moving along fine with their updating and upkeep of the arena area and so on. Not much to report there, other than, other than things are proceeding, and they've lined up quite a few events out there and so on. So that, that is still a work in progress, and they're trying to turn it into, to a much more of a moneymaker than, than a money drain. So we're, we're still working on that. I drove to Green River on the 21st, went to the Council on Aging meeting, elected new officers, and talked a little bit about the weather and some other things. And that was a good meeting. Everybody was happy, and that was that. Then I attended the Grand Water and Sewer Full Board and District meeting on the 21st, in which the Spanish Valley Water and Sewer Improvement District, Grand County Special Water Service District, Grand County Water Conservancy District, and Grand Water Sewer, Sewer and Service Agency were all there. That meeting was mostly centered around getting approval on the proposal for Smoon, Rich, and Marsing to do the auditing and bookkeeping services for the next year. Then there was a report on the, you know, what was, what was going on with, with regard to the snowpack and the water and so on. Then I also attended the mosquito abatement district meeting last night, or Monday night, rather. And they're working real hard right now. They've got, they've got a lot to do, and they're having some vehicle problems. So they're trying to get that worked out, and because their, their funds have been cut, you know, they're, we're struggling a little bit with trying to work out how to replace vehicles that have been in service since 1989. But Libby's doing a great job with that. There are 14 different beaver dams in the sloughs, which they're having to take apart every single day, and that's taken, you know, a lot of time. And so anyway, they're looking to, to get into full gear on, on the mosquito abatement, simply because it's going to be a big year for them with the, with the runoff and so on and so forth.
Terry?
I'm sorry?
Terry, why do they take beaver dams? Because they provide.
They're taking the beaver dams because they, they're providing, they're providing hatch areas for the mosquito populations. Yeah, so they need to take them out. And, you know, there's, it's a sad thing, but there's nothing else they can do. And anywhere where there's water that's not moving, you know, the mosquito population just explodes. So that's, they, they just need to do it. But the beavers, I mean, they just put them back the next night. Take them down the next day, you know? It's kind of a game for them, I think. I don't think it's hurting anything, you know, because when they really need those lodges, mostly, in the winter. But anyway, that's what, that's what's going on there. That's all I have.
Well, I was supposed to have Airport Board yesterday, and it slipped my mind, so I don't have anything to report. I'll just mention real quickly that after our joint meeting with the city and meeting with Representative Curtis, I did attend the Town Hall meeting. He reported, he started the meeting, kind of reporting on some local things, but then the citizen comments kind of took it more on a federal focus and what the, a lot of international affairs and kind of working with our current administration. And so that was, I was appreciative of him coming down, and it was an interesting night. I met with the Sand Flats Recreation Board. Or. Thank you. I met with Sand Flats. They are expanding Campground D this year. Those, those plans have been finalized, so that, well, they'll be breaking ground on that pretty soon. The most exciting thing is this year is the 50th anniversary of the Slick Rock Trail, and so they're planning a celebration on that. And so we're kicking around ideas and options for that. And it was agreed upon that it would be appreciated if it was more of kind of a locals event and kind of focused more on that than attracting national bikes and motorcycle sponsors to come and, and make a big event out of it. So it's, it's probably going to involve some kind of sunset barbecue up there, hopefully some fun games for motos and mountain bikes. And there was a subcommittee formed that was really excited about that. So if any members of the public are interested in helping with planning for the 50th anniversary of the Slick Rock Bike Trail, ask around, and, and there's some planning going on for that to take place this summer. We're all at that Ethics Meeting. I thought that was worth mentioning, that we got together for that discussion, and then followed by the forms of government. And then the Library Board met. There's a big discussion about library policies, continuing to revisit the strategic plan and refine that. And then the EMS Special Service Board mostly met in preparation for today's workshop. And while you're here, I'll just mention that we are supportive of coming to a low-cost lease agreement with the EMS Special Service District for use of the American Legion Building up by. And so to make the board happy, I just wanted to say that in a public setting, that I would expect them to reach out to you to work on a lease agreement similar to. Okay, you got the memo. If not, the memo's coming. There, I said it, Liz, if you're watching on YouTube. And that's all I have for that. Elected official reports? None. Council Administrator report?
Well, I've just been busy with some annual evaluations of some department heads. It seems like fall and spring, it's just very, a lot of, a lot of them. So winding down with that finally. And other than that, been really busy with the Study Committee. That's, I think I told you last time, they've delegated the Board's secretary responsibilities to me, which means minutes and development of the agenda and helping them keep on track of everything. And so that's happening. And I did attend, of course, as part of their special meeting, the training by Gavin Anderson, the Salt Lake County District Deputy Attorney, on the four forms of government and on the ethics. So I do have a leadership meeting this week that I will lead with the department heads and elected officials, and we, I did include those documents in our package, and will be touching on it to just kind of keep that going forward. So that's all I've got.
Any department reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to agency reports. The Housing Authority of Southeastern Utah, Mr. Ben Riley.
Feel free to follow along on my report, and if you have any questions, you can stop me along the way. I'll just kind of go through my report and take any questions at the end. Start off with our financials. Couple things that happened since last fall. We did our six-month budget actual. Our house's finances are still looking really good, so that's great. Great news. And we also had an audit for our fiscal year in 2018. Our fiscal year runs July 1 through June 30. And so we'll actually get our audit back at the end of the calendar year for the previous fiscal year. Happy to say we have no findings, which is really hard to do, so we're really happy about that.
Can I, can I just comment there?
Sure, absolutely.
In audits I've been involved in, the auditors have told me, we will look. It's our job to have a finding, so we will keep, if we don't find anything, we'll keep looking until we find something, we'll make something up. So good job, Ben.
We usually have small findings that are fairly inconsequential. You know, we expect them to find that, so it was rather surprising that they had no findings this year, which is great.
Congratulations.
We are working on our next Mutual Self-Help Grant. I highlight that because that's one of our bigger funding sources. We have, we'll probably be asking for more money since the cost of construction has continued to rise. So that's been great news for us, and the fact we're even able to hire more construction people in the field to help continue doing our Mutual Self-Help program. Section 8, we continue to serve families, about 44 to 47 families in the Grand, Grand Sand Lake community. Subsidize a portion of their rent. We have some good news there. We also just hired somebody who's been without, somebody to manage that program. And we've been getting people since January, and so we've been hot on the trail trying to find somebody to manage that. And we found somebody that's going to start on Mondays, and we're excited about that. He's just been checking in the office for the last two and a half months to do all the jobs. So excited to get a third person to have something to do with this office, so. On the Crown, all of our Crowns are occupied, as they always are, as we have very low rents. And the idea to, that you're not just paying down the mortgage, maybe to buy it after 15 years, is obviously, we'll stay in those homes, we'll see if they can get in them. We do have one of our projects, which is all about older happening, we're coming up for year 15. At the year 15, we're able to buy the home, hope the equity that the rents paid down the mortgage. We do put a de-reservation on that for if they haven't been able to keep the house for 15 years. The point of the program is for them to own the home after 15 years, rented it. But if they haven't been, if they're a home for 15 years, we put a de-reservation on it. If they were to sell the home, they split the equity, they're only entitled to the equity for the amount of years that they're in the home. So it's kind of complicated, but if they're in the home for seven years, they will get 750 of the equity if they sold it after that. So the rest will come back to us. So it's a great program, affordable housing for 15 years, and they're able to buy it for a low rate. Some report, not much to report there. They do a great job of, they always have low vacancies, strong waiting lists. We have our investors come two or three times a year to come and do inspections, and those always turn out well. So seller management has been doing a good job there. Virginia Apartments is also doing very well. We're at 100% occupancy. We did get a grant to do some fencing cabinets and countertops, some general upgrades there. A couple of new seven units, but we'll get them hopefully in the next year. Our Mutual Self-Help, we finished our last build on Vanita Street in December. So that was total 28 of those 32 homes that we built in that subdivision, so we're super proud of that build. Our current build isn't blending right now. We're doing five homes. Our current build isn't landing right now, we're doing five homes, which will give us 18 of our 19 homes for Grand High, and we're going to do two rehabs here, and I'll have two houses that will be a rehab build on, to finish out our Grand High here, which will be 1919. Like I said earlier, we are submitting our 10th Mutual Self-Help Grant, probably this week or early next week. It will be for 20 homes, I suspect it will probably be the majority of those in Grand High. Hopefully, Wingate Village, which I'll touch on next, has a lot of new plots, and then we've also been in contact with the Memorial Land Trust to, we'll start on their property as soon as they're ready, they got new market tax credit, so I want to throw up the bases to get their infrastructure in, so we're looking forward to building there. And we've also been talking with a couple of developers that are looking at HDH, so we're hoping to be part of those developers there, to do some self-help homes there. MAP Senior Living, that's exciting news, we think we'll be breaking ground this summer, probably June or July, 36 units, a affordable senior housing, it's located on Park Drive, you take Park Drive, it's Midwest, we'll be waiting for that term dates, right there behind the LDS Church. 31 bedrooms and 62 bedrooms, rents involve $250 to $700. So, it's a great ground, that's been, I think we first started talking about that in summer of 2017, so, waiting to feel for how long the process takes, especially with the plans and issues. Wingate Village, more exciting news, we did get a favorable recommendation, we're planning to issue for our preliminary plat, so we're hoping that final plat, I'll be back here next council meeting, for our final plat for our public hearing and possibly vote on our final plat. We did get tax credits awarded for that project as well, last fall, so we are looking forward to doing 22 units of three and four bedroom townhomes, that will be about $300 to $750 a month, townhomes, kind of shotgun townhomes, 288, and then, in five different blocks, in five or six buildings. 22 units of tax credit homes, affordable rentals, and then we'll do 11 self-help homes, like I mentioned, the self-help. So, yeah, we're looking forward, we did get a CBG grant that you know about, that was forwarded to the county for this project, so we're hoping to break ground as soon as possible, look back grant, do anything else once we get, once we get the final plat. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Any questions for Ben? Comments? Crushing, glad to have you.
Good job.
Appreciate it. Next up, Item A, for recognizing the AmeriCorps Vista Vol- oh, oh, sorry, sorry, I skipped my favorite part. Citizens to be heard, this is the portion of the meeting for citizens that want to speak to an item that's not on the agenda. If you're interested in speaking on an item on the agenda, please fill out one of these cards and mark the agenda item that you're interested in. If it was an issue that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Any citizens? Yep, please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I think you fill out a card.
Oh, were you interested in speaking on an agenda item?
That too.
Okay.
I won't talk about that now.
Great.
My name is Ned Dalton, I live on East Bay Road, and we just had a subdivision built next door to me, and the county required, for the drainage, in one spot, they put a 48-inch cover. And, lo and behold, after the 48 inches, the county went back and put chains, their covers, across the road that leads into this 48-inch cover, with a 24-inch cover. So, it appears to me like that the county is now my flood insurance curator, that's the way I look at it. I think some things ought to be straightened out, and actually, people, I know engineers are smart, and there's a lot of things, but they ought to look at how the washes got there to start, and what the drainage is. Just all those washes up there, we started with strings that used to run in the creek, and now none of them running in the creek, so, we've lived there 41 years, but we've never seen a drop of water in that wash.
Great.
Just to let you know that you are the carrier now.
Well, thank you for your comments, I'm no engineer either, but we will, we'll look into it. And did we get the address in a minute? What road were you on again, Ned?
East Bay.
Any other citizens for?
My name is Joe Holliok, and I have a question that no one's been able to answer. I've talked to several people, I've talked to John Cortez, I've talked to Ruth, I've talked to the county surveyor, and no one seems to be able to give me an answer. I live on the corner of Roberts Road and Lemon Lane, and when I bought the property in 1975, John Keel gave me a map. You want me to bring this up and show it to you? Is anybody interested in seeing it? So you can-
Should we get a copy?
So you can understand what I'm talking about?
Sure. Greg will grab it. Thanks.
I bought the property prior to the construction of Roberts Road, and John Keel had placed corner markers on all four corners of the property. When Roberts Road was built, they tore out three of those markers. When Lemon Lane was worked on, they tore out another one. I was, I was promised at the time by Kim Pope that they would be replaced. The county surveyor was there, and he said, "Oh yeah, we'll get those back in." So now, today, and I've pursued this over and over and over, and never been able to get any, they just kept saying, "Oh yeah, we'll get it done, we'll get it done, we'll get it done." As of today, it has not been done, and I want to build a fence, so I need to know where my property line is. Now, we all learned in kindergarten, if not before, that if you tear something up, you replace it or fix it. And I'm wanting somebody to put those back in, so I will know where I can build a fence. And everybody's told me the only thing I can do is come to the council and present it to you, to have you tell me whose responsibility it is to repair something the county destroyed.
I'll weigh in, it's really a legal issue, and you haven't come to my office, so I think that if you had, we could have dealt with it quicker, but it is improper to remove markers-
I understand.
-boundary markers, so if the county did do that, we need to put them back, so we will investigate it and deal with it.
Okay. Now, on that map that you have, I have circled three of them that I need to have replaced. Now, I realize that two of them would be out in the middle of the pavement, and, of course, I assumed, and Kim Pope told me that when they replaced them, they would put it back on the edge of the right of way, rather than on the property line, and so that's, that's fine with me. But the three that I have circled on that map need to be replaced, and I would like to have that map back, so if you want to make your copy, I would-
What would be great is, it looks like you have a packet there, if you could get that to the county attorney's office, including your map, and then-
I don't, I don't have anything else here-
Okay.
... except some information that Ruth gave me, one of them concerning the destruction of monuments, and the other one is just an email that she sent. I think it was this blank.
Okay.
And I was, never referred to your office, I never had any idea, I talked to Lucas Blake several times, I've talked to Ruth several times, I've talked to John Cortez, and today I talked to Phil Jackson, so.
You're doing your work.
What?
Well, you're doing a lot of work on it, well-
It has, it has been a lot of work, you wouldn't think you'd have to go through that much to get something like this done.
It's different, it's 40 years old. But, yeah, I apologize to you, Mr. Holliok, that I did not reach out to the county attorney, it did occur to me, and I just thought, this is small potatoes, we can handle this, and so, I thought we were working toward getting it handled, without having, I didn't invite you to come today.
I thought it was small potatoes too, but it hasn't been done, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you're making a copy of your map?
Thank you, Robert. Good job, good job.
Any other citizens to be heard for an item that's not on the agenda? With that, that brings us to Item I, the presentation of recognizing the AmeriCorps Vista Volunteers serving in Grand County. Appears like we have some Vista Volunteers here, if you want to come forward and stand for a minute. So, for folks in the audience that are unaware, across the country, April 2 is a day set aside to recognize the service of local and national volunteers. In Grand County, our 10 Vista Volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism through their efforts to make it life better for all residents through the work they do every day. I thank each of our Canyonland AmeriCorps Vista members today for this service. In 2018 fiscal year, their efforts brought in almost $700,000 in cash resources, $191,000 in in-kind donations, supported 2,621 local youth, and mobilized over 400 volunteers for local nonprofits and government agencies. These impressive numbers keep Grand County and Moab the vibrant place it is to live. So, thank you all for being here.
Chair, could we kind of introduce ourselves and tell us where they're-
Please do.
I'm Ruth Andrews, I'm a Vista volunteer.
And where are you originally from?
Originally from Virginia.
George DeShan, originally from Kentucky, he's also a volunteer.
I'm Cara Rula, originally from Illinois, and I'm a AmeriCorps Vista volunteer.
Hey, I'm Megan Malar, I'm a property manager as well, and I'm a landlord.
And I'm Marry, grew up in Seattle, and I'm a Vista advocate.
Hey, I'm just from Santos, and I'm a mortgage agent at all, and I'm originally from Media City.
I'm Jeff Laddick, actually from Florida.
Hey, I'm JD McLeanahan, originally from Texas, with Grand County Community Development.
Thank you so much for being here and all that you've done.
Thank you.
Was there any other comments on the Vista crew? Okay, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Item J, approving proposal from Jones and Demille, Grand County Engineer of Record for Preconstruction and Construction Engineering Services for Arbor Drive and LaSalle Road for replacement of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and drainage improvements. Bill Jackson.
Also, that was Danny Flannery from Jones and Demille Engineering, if you have any real technical stuff. So, as you, well, many of you may know, some may not, Heckla subdivision was platted in 1955, and fence construction, so, so it's been there quite some time, and need some curb and gutter work in, on those roads, and it's also Orchard Way. And then, Arbor was platted in 77, 1977, and it has some curb and gutter issues, as well as the sidewalk deterioration. So, I reached out to Jones and Demille, County Engineer of Record, to get a proposal, a scope of work, and that's what receiving for you, and I would like to get your blessing, I guess, to get these improvements done on these subdivisions.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the proposal from Jones and Demille, Grand County Engineer of Record for Preconstruction and Construction Engineering Services for Arbor Drive in the Murphy subdivision and LaSalle Road in the Heckla subdivision for replacement of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and drainage improvements. Authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Greg Calliday, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion? Just while you're here, since you came down, I know this is right on the border of city limits, and oftentimes, things from Heckla run into the bike path there, and things can get flooded, and so I just want to be sure that it's not just like kicking it down the curb, and that the water can actually make its way to the creek there, so.
So, I think right there, you're talking about the entrance there to-
Across from Rotary Park?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think the cities went in there and cut a ditch right there on that, where the city and the county boundary there.
Okay.
On top of the coves to force out water, but I think that's something we can look at, I mean, we realize there's a, there's an issue there.
Yeah, I would just like to be-
Keep in mind, though, it's kind of a city problem.
Well, I think that that's kind of, you know-
But we'll look at it.
Great, I appreciate it.
All right, good neighbors.
Hey, Bill, are they going to be fixing this drain that's right in the middle of the walkway? It looks a little unsafe, I guess they're going to be fixing that, right?
Um, right in the middle of the walkway.
It looks like there's a dirt walkway, there's a cones stood right beside it.
Where side is it? Oh, yeah, 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 you're talking about down the car, absolutely, that's one of our main focuses to fix that, that particular drain.
They're going to move it out to the street, or are they going to?
Uh, well, that's what we'll be designing. We know we've got to upgrade some pipe in there, the existing pipe from that drain, because our master drainage plan actually conveys some water off of Murphy Lane down to that point, not down Arbor, but down to some various deserts we have, but, so, that pipe will be upgraded, yes, that inlet will be upgraded as well. And I know that there's some problems with the down Arbor Court, which is a private road, and the water gets down to that cul-de-sac, and that drain is not being able to handle, so it goes on down to Arbor Court. So, yeah, that's one of the things we'll be looking at, also designing those drainages.
Jaylen?
I guess my question is, how do you get on that list? Is this part of an overall replacement of aging infrastructure, or do people just come to you and say, "Hey, this needs to be fixed"?
Did you look at, my thoughts on that is, if you look at the pictures, hopefully they were in the packet, other than just the story, the infrastructure.
Right, but, so did you drive by and notice that, or did the neighborhood complain?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, all.
Thank you. Next up, Item K, approving the county priority rankings of short-term projects for the Permanent Community Impact Fund Board, capital improvement list as voted on and submitted by various stakeholders, entities, representatives per the Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments process. Ruth, you want to walk us through this?
I will. So, this is the process of the Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments, who works closely with the CIB staff. The purpose is actually to help provide CIB staff kind of a visualization of what the county says is what's important for the short-term funding, and that would be the state's fiscal year 2019, 2020. So, the entities within Grand County met, that would include the road department, our airport, Moab Valley Fire was actually not there, this is leftover from last year, Moab City was there, solid waste, groundwater and sewer, and EMS Special Service District. I was also there, but wasn't able to vote, and I'll explain the vote in just a moment, and USU Moab was represented, but they chose not to vote. So, what happens in this entity meeting is a silent vote on what each person thinks after they've heard a little bit of a description of the project for this, you know, for potential funding this coming year, fiscal year, that, the question was, if only one project was funded within the county during the year, which project has the greater need? And so, what's before you is what the group that day came up with, there are 17 projects, the first one being the EMS facility that you all just heard about today, and the very last one is the new office building for Grand County, the administrative building. And I believe the reason that one came in last was because I couldn't confirm whether or not that was for sure going to happen in the 2019, 20 fiscal year, which I believe means before June 1 of 2020. I wasn't positive about that, and so, anyway, but you all have an opportunity- But you all have an opportunity to either accept what's before you and say, that's good, and we send it on to ALG, or you can say, no, we want to put our own priority on this. So, you can switch it all around, and what the ALG will do is average your ranking with, per project, with the ranking that the group provided for that same project.
Greg?
Question. Number 11 here, Castle Valley Fire District, fire protection water, wasn't that done?
We did not know for sure, so.
Yeah.
No one was there from Castle Valley to speak to it.
Okay, we, Fire District has acquired the land with the well, so I think that is done, okay?
Would that affect the ranking if they never went to the CIB, the prioritization?
No, they wanted to have the prioritization even if these applications don't actually get submitted.
Okay.
So, no harm done with that.
The big glaring thing for me is the office building. I think that that is, it's something that I would like to prioritize, especially since it's the first time, to my knowledge, it's been on the list in this form or whatever. And I know sometimes these things get edited out here for a little bit, so I'd like to at least get it on their radar that it's something that we're thinking of, and I think the first step in that process would be getting all our information together so that we actually know what we're asking for. And so I would be willing to try to get some plans taken care of this year, so architectural plans, so that we can go to the CIB board next year. And that being said, I could see bumping number 17, the office building, up to like number six, so that it's pretty high priority, but not necessarily bumping out some of these other ones that are ready to go. Any thoughts on that? Any?
We have a motion. We can't make a motion.
I think it's a good idea.
Well, I was wondering, it looks like, well, no, it doesn't, because the Spanish Valley Water and Sewer are planning to go in 2019, so Canyonland Health Services District. But, yeah, so, no, I was thinking if we?
I might be misspeaking, but I'm on that board, and I've heard serial about that, one and a half million dollar project, and so I'm going to ask about that this Thursday. I'd be really surprised if they went after CIB money this year.
Yeah, they, yeah, okay. So you want to put it at six?
It's kind of the neighborhood, I was thinking.
The email that's in the packet, let's see, from Chris, the recommendation is first or second quarter 2020, which would put us at, I guess, seven or eight is the way I'm looking at it, but I got a question on another project. What's the realignment of Spanish Valley Drive and Mill Creek Drive, so that's not the same as the multi-use pathway? What, is Bill still here? Bill, can you give me a quick refresher on that?
Yeah, that's been on the list for some time. I think, and Jack Wright could maybe speak to it too, but I think the county decided on, with this multi-use pathway project, to the extent that we're doing there, I think we're going to try to push them as a one project, to try to get that, the same funding, you know, and just do it all at once.
Yeah.
If the funding comes in quickly.
That would be ideal. Just to give you a little bit of history on this project, we do have 30% designs for it. It's basically to realign that intersection so that it's more of a 90-degree intersection, which is more standard design for safety, and as we see more traffic in that vicinity, both because of the campus and because of developing Spanish Valley, we want to make sure that we get that intersection redesigned.
Oh, okay.
We did submit an application for funding through the federal program that the state administers for non-urban road funding, but they changed the classifications and have now put us into the small urban categories, so we're competing against a much larger set of applicants. But to make matters worse, they put that program on hold while they, I don't know, redefine what it is, and how you get funds and whatnot, and so, right now, we don't really have any obvious sources of funding, but, you know, it makes sense to keep it on the CIB list, because as Bill said, you know, we're moving forward on the design of that multi-use pathway, and it would be great to do both of these projects at the same time. But you still have them listed separately? So if the pathway funding came through, and that you would just kind of go up into the intersection or something, or? Yeah, I mean, even without that alignment or realignment occurring, that the pathway could go in, because we are designing the pathway as if the project will happen, so.
So we've got plenty of right-of-way in that area, put the pathway in, and use it realigning later with the same. But the best we're, if we all get done.
Right, that would be nice.
Well, the short-term list outside of the new office building, it looks pretty good to me as far as the ranking. There's nothing, you know, on here that looks, you know, grossly out of order. Those projects at the top are properly placed.
Yep.
Could I speak to one more project?
Sure.
Because I see there's a little, a lot of information is lacking on this Phase 2 of Jackson Street. So Phase 1, obviously, was the detention base itself, and we had a final inspection on the 28th, asked applying color. So now just the, you know, all the financial stuff needs a little conclusion taken care of. So Phase 2 is the conveyance of that, and talking with the Moab City, Chuck Williams, and they're interested in being a part of that, and they've actually committed $75,000. And so I'm just saying that those dollar amounts aren't in this document, and of course the county has $400,000 in their Storm Drainage Mitigation Fund, and the Transportation District, now that they, you know, they are able to fund storm drainage, they've committed $100,000. So at this point, we've got $575,000 for the Phase 2. Estimated cost right now is a billion 250,000 for Phase 2, and so, be going to CIB, cross, you know, 675. If we went in June, I think that's kind of the big, what we're going to do in June, compete against each other.
Bill, I thought the Stewart Canyon deal was done with the city, and I thought they were getting some help from UDOT on that?
I did too, and I wasn't able to stay for that whole meeting, so I don't know what anyone was talking about. David Everett was there, but I don't know if he spanked it on that or not, but I thought that was taken care of.
Yeah, UDOT was supposed to be ready to go and offering some financial assistance, I thought, so that's disappointing, but it is a high priority, huh?
Yeah.
For those guys.
The other thing to keep in mind with this process is that whatever we submit from this today will get averaged with this list that we're looking at now. So if we moved a city project down a couple notches, then it would get averaged. You know, if we made the Stewart Canyon number five, and then it got averaged with this, it would really come out at number four, or whatever. So if we put the new office building at number six or whatever, then it's really going to end up at like 12. So we're just trying to like kind of?
Give it up there a little bit.
Yeah, and so maybe we want to go at higher, or maybe we don't, or whatever, I don't.
Yeah.
It still comes down to going before the board and making a case, but I think, you know, we've already budgeted for a match on the Jackson Street, and it sounds good that city's wanting to partner with that for getting the conveyance down to the creek. And is there any other of the projects that we need to look at?
Got a question?
Yep.
Ruth, when you were there, was there anybody from Thompson Springs Special Service District there at all?
Thompson, Thompson Springs? That would be you guys.
No, I mean?
Thompson Water?
Water District, I'm sorry.
No, no, there was not.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody want to take a stab at juggling a few of these around?
It looks like the county is moving the office, county office building to number six?
I mean, I was just taking a stab at it, yeah, if.
Just know that it won't come out as number six.
Oh, I know.
It'll come out like as 12 or something.
And I don't know if that's a bad idea to split up the two Spanish Valley projects, if we want to, I don't know, how neighborly we want to be, and maybe move a city project down a couple notches, just to.
So did I hear that we're considering combining those, the two Spanish Valley Drive projects for this list? Did I not hear that?
It seems like there's a vision to do the two together, but that right now, the applications are separate in case the funding only comes through for one of the Spanish Valley projects. That's, yeah. I mean, I really see the EMS staying number one. I think the airport's important to have up there. Jackson Street seems like we should finish that thing up, so, you know, those are definitely top three for me. I think with all this, you know, there's been applications submitted for the high-density housing overlay on Spanish Valley, so I think the pathway should stay high, and then, you know, the new office building is something for me, so.
I would move to amend the county priority rankings of short-term projects for the CIB list as submitted by various stakeholder entity reps per the Southeastern Utah Association of Local Governments process as follows. So we would, we're pulling Castle Valley Fire District, and then we would add the new office building after the realigned Spanish Valley Drive and Mill Creek Drive project, and before they replace the existing irrigation well at Grand County MBA. And with the understanding that SCU ALG offers to average together the county council's amended ranking for a given project with the stakeholder entity's ranking for the same project. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Yep.
Second.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Mary McGann. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously.
So, just to clarify, on the list, then it will show up as number six on ALG's list?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Because we pulled the Castle Valley project, so they all get bumped up one then.
All right, next up would be, so I don't have a paper agenda, I'm looking back and forward. Item L, adopting proposed resolution amending resolution number 2796 that enacted the policies and procedures for entering into agreement approving templates for independent contractors in order to replace the independent contractor agreement. Christina Sloan.
Okay, resolution number 2796 is the one that gives you our template independent contractor agreement and rental facilities agreements as exhibits. It has come up very early on that our independent contractor agreement is very inadequate. It was last reviewed in July of 2007, so 12 years ago, so I have proposed, I have essentially rewritten that independent contractor agreement. You have the red line, and you have a clean copy. So, this amendment to resolution 2796 is only amending Exhibit 1, which is that independent contractor agreement. I haven't looked at the rental facilities agreement. We can certainly go through it as you wish. It's set up, one thing, it, one, it gives the county a lot more protection. The old agreement was very unimpressive in terms of protecting the county in a variety of ways. The old agreement also wasn't very flexible to be applied by staff for different kinds of contractors. We get all sorts of contractors, from, say, a landmark professional service to a construction company that's out at the airport. Those are two very different services. So, the way I have set it up is much more flexible for staff to be able to plug and chug various provisions, and I give notes to staff about when to apply which provisions. It's a lot more user-friendly and flexible for the county.
Mr. Chair, I would move to adopt the proposed resolution amending resolution number 2796 that enacted the policies and procedures for entering into agreements and approving templates for independent contractors in order to replace the independent contractor agreement. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Rory Paxman. Any further discussion? This talks.
Would you like typos submitted privately by email at a later date?
There's just a couple really silly.
You don't offer that to anybody else.
Well, I figure people might be getting sick of me, I don't know.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Appreciate it, it was an effort, a tedious one.
I'm sure it was.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Next up, Item M, adopting proposed resolution to approve amendments to the Grand County Employee Handbook to Include Field Per diem Rates, Mr. Baird.
So, just in investigating how field per diem has been paid out, I noticed that different departments have been getting different rates, and so, went to the employee handbook and realized that there is no provision for field per diem in the employee handbook. And so, I drafted this resolution to place a field per diem into the employee handbook so that we can make use of it, and in the standard sense, we use the US, or GSA, what is that? I can't remember what the acronym stands for, Government Services Administration or something like that. And so, they establish federal per diem rates, and they also have a field rate that the Forest Service uses, and so, that's the field rate that I called out for the proposed policy revision, and that's about all there is to that. I think that it would be better to establish proper field per diem.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the proposed resolution amending the Grand County Employee Handbook to Include a provision for field per diem, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Curtis Wells, seconded by Terry Morse. Any further discussion? I just had a question of kind of which departments you think that, just because it calls out backcountry travel, is that, would that include sheriff and that sort of stuff, or is it?
Well, it'd include anybody in the county who would end up having to camp overnight.
Overnight camping, gotcha.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's what field per diem basically is, is camping, and that's why it's a different rate than the standard field per diem, which is based more on restaurant price index.
Yeah, so, okay, I thought it was just if you were spending time in the field. I didn't realize it was overnight.
No, this is just for, yeah, overnight.
Gotcha. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I actually?
Please.
I just want the council just to be aware that this will impact the road department crew. They're used to the higher rate, I think this does bring things in line, and we've been in touch with the road supervisor, Bill, who's in here, but I just want you to know, it's going to be a reduction of what they're used, and I'm talking about about six people, I think, or more, maybe up to a dozen in a year, who camp up in the book cliffs. You know, it's a savings if they do all that, but anyway, it's going to hit their pocketbooks, and so I wanted you to know that, and we're trying to have them see that all these years, they've had many, many years of doing this, that it's more like seeing it like a bonus, because this is actually a legal situation, isn't it? So.
Well, I mean, per diem is considered expense reimbursement, and so, if an employee is not spending the full amount on meals during the time that they're working on the project and for Grand County business? project and for Grand County business, you know, technically, it's not really supposed to happen, because it's an expense reimbursement, and so there's no income tax withheld on it, there's no taxes paid on it, and so you cannot consider per diem to be a part of an employee compensation package, you just can't do it. And so, you know, I, there are other ways to deal with those kinds of things, if there needs to be some kind of, you know, field pay, that's a totally different issue than per diem.
Thanks for that. Any further discussion? Well, I'm sorry to see that peg those guys wallets, but I think that it's nice to have a standard, and that, you know, whether it's the road department, the weed department, or the parks, or whatever, that the trails that we're all on.
And I mean, and the weed department's actually been getting less than this per diem rate.
Oh.
So it's gone both directions, you know, so I think it's, it's good to standardize and get everybody on the same per diem rate for the, for the similar types of expense reimbursement. And that's the thing to remember, this is expense reimbursement, not any component of an employee's compensation package.
And so this GSA that changes annually or periodically or whatever?
Periodically, yeah.
And so this would just peg it to that?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I don't know how often it changes, but it does change sometimes when they reevaluate it, and so that's why there's no dollar figure attached to it, it's just based on the current GSA field rate.
Great.
For, for the area that, you know, it applies to. And Grand County gets a higher rate than a lot of other places in Utah, besides Summit County, which gets the highest rate, and obvious reasons there being, you know, higher cost of living in resort communities.
Any other discussion? Motion on the table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, Chris.
Next up, Jen, item N, adopting proposed ordinance to approve amendments of the Grand County Land Use Code, Section 2411, 6.5 and 6.6 related to outdoor lighting sign illumination standards. Zachariah, you want to walk us through this? We need the. Oh, wait here, here.
Oh, no.
Okay, so I want to get something up on the screen for you, but in the meantime, I can introduce the ordinance. As you know, at the last county council meeting, we held a public hearing to review proposed changes to the outdoor lighting and sign illumination standards in the county's land use code, and that ordinance was given a favorable recommendation to you from the planning commission. I presented staff's justifications for working on the ordinance. Just to remind you what those are, you know, it includes dark sky preservation for cultural and social values, it includes energy efficiency, it includes ecological well-being, human health, astro-tourism as a form of economic development. So myriad of justifications or motivations, at least for looking at those. We have received quite a few citizen comments on this matter. In total, between the comments that are in your packet and those that have come in since the packet was produced, 68 letters in total in favor of this ordinance and two opposed. So, you know, just to give you a sense of at least who is commenting on this, or what the folks who are commenting on this are saying, you know, I know that's not the only way that you make decisions, but it's one, you know, decision point. So I don't have anything to add to what I said at the last meeting, but since then, the ordinance has gone through legal review, and there are some minor changes. Nothing substantive, in my opinion, that would, you know, lead me to want to delay action on this, but it's important that we have this on the record if you do choose to take action on it tonight. You know, I think that state code, you know, wouldn't prohibit you from taking action on this. That's the point of having public hearings and public meetings where you, you know, discuss potential changes to an ordinance, and again, these are not, in my opinion, substantial changes that, that, you know, would lead anyone to question the sort of transparency or ethical nature of the changes. So if we can get the screen to go on, bring those up. But in the meantime, if you have any questions for me?
Don, it's just a question. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I guess my question would be on, I just didn't get a chance to go through it, Zachariah, and apparently the, you know, the street lighting is going to have to be shielded, bulbs changed apparently. So I have a question on, on regulatory signs, speed limit stop signs, things of that nature. Are those exempted?
I think that's a great example of where, you know, you would say, what's the level of lighting that's absolutely needed for safety? You know, there were a lot of questions that came up, both planning commission and county council, with citizens, you know, concerned about safety and security. There's nothing in this ordinance that, in my opinion, would jeopardize the public's safety, and where there's a specific, you know, technical reason to have lighting that, you know, exceeds these standards, you know, I think that's an easy thing to justify. If that answers your question.
Yes, speaking of specifics, so we have Zimmerman Lane out, Spanish Valley Drive. We're requiring from the HOA there that speed, keep speedy through there and get over the 191 and so on. So I had noticed this small city had these speed limit signs, and they had several lights around them, you know, the flag just flashing to get their attention on the speed limit signs. And then they also have ones that light up, say, your speed is this, you know, we don't have those. So we have two of them out there, and I've asked the HOA residents there whether we installed them to give some feedback, and I haven't received anything back from them, good or bad. We did have a citizen cross just approximately as the bird flies a half a mile, right around there, complaining about those flashing lights. That's my question. Is that, is that something that we're going to have to pull those signs out, or are we going to have to do what? It seems to be working as intended, slow the traffic.
So, I mean, I can give you my response, I don't know what the council wants to say.
I don't know, does it say it's, those items are exempted or safety?
The traffic control signals and devices are all exempted.
Regardless of how bright they're flashing or what.
That's how it reads now, so that's how it works.
That's how it's written. That is also an example where I would say, you know, and I spoke to Glenn with this, I don't, I'm not, like, I'm not here to sort of debate this issue, right, in this council meeting, but, you know, there is a fundamental difference between the lights that were installed and, say, the lights that you referenced within city limits, and that the lights that go on in city limits are not flashing all the time. They only flash when people drive.
I beg to differ, but.
Really?
That's what it was, they're always blinking.
They only flash when you.
They have two times.
The one by my house is always flashing.
Yeah, the ones on Fifth West.
There's always somebody driving by? Go figure.
But I agree, you know, I just wanted to make sure, like you said, be specific, that those kinds of regulatory signs are exempted.
Well, my way in on that is that this would not require us to replace them. There could be a discussion whether we want to, but it wouldn't be required, I guess.
Yeah, exactly. That's how I intended it to be.
Good question, thank you for that.
So if I could just briefly go through these changes, I'm only going to stop, obviously, where there are red light changes, and most of them are just to replace, like, chapter with section. So.
I don't think you did the script of any whereon.
Okay.
Any substantive words?
Well, yeah, just to give you an example, though. So, you know, these are the types of changes that are capitalizing purpose, changing chapter to section. Okay, so I'll skip over the remainder of these to save you from watching me stroll. Here's an example, all lighting should be consistent with and promote the purposes set forth in this section rather than just purpose. So nothing substantial there. Just to clarify the language around the time, curfew, okay? Not changing the time, just the language to clarify what is communicated by them.
And on that one, that's handled a couple of times, so that's making it consistent with what it says below.
Correct. Here, this change from 11 to 10 is a change in the time, but again, it is just to make it consistent out of the section above that. Legal counsel advised removing this text, which is, I guess, you know, probably to a lay reader, a confusing exemption for compliance. So the exemptions were basically related to this sort of notion of amortization. So if you were to take action on this lighting ordinance, obviously, there's lighting out of the county that wouldn't comply with the standards that are in here, they would be considered non-conforming lighting. There is a provision in here to amortize out that non-conforming lighting for five years with the standards in mind. So the section B says all outdoor lighting legally existing and installed prior to the effective date of this section, and which is not otherwise exemptive, shall be considered non-conforming and shall be brought into compliance by the property owner as follows immediately as a condition for a twizzle upon application for a building permit, sign permit, conditional use permit, new business license, site name review, or other county permit review. So this is basically an existential development for really anybody coming in for an application, and at that time, when they submit an application, the expectation would be that they come into compliance. In the version that was presented two weeks ago, there were, you know, these exemptions for, for that based on like how big of an expansion it would be, or what kind of development it would be, and legal counsel advised to just remove those exemptions and keep it simple. I agree with that, and it's fine.
And to flesh that out a little bit, if I may.
Sure.
Everyone's got to come into compliance in five years. It's very typical where you change anything, you need to come into compliance now, and non-conforming use law, that's very typical. This exemption was providing an exemption mechanism for smaller projects, and then you could add them up cumulatively, and it was a big burden on staff in the county to track it, when we all need to come into compliance anyway in five years. So that's why I recommended, from a county burden standpoint, administrative standpoint, that it was unnecessary and too complicated.
And then in two and three, no substantive changes here, just clarifying the language. C is proposed for removal. C was a provision that would basically commit the county to conducting two separate lighting audits at given times, and concern there was that it wasn't specific enough in terms of what would be required to be included in those audits, and, you know, you wouldn't want any liability questions around the county's ability to enforce this code provision due to, you know, questions about those audits. So those were the, those were the changes that were not just like chapter or section, you think?
And one other comment on the audit, it's organic that we're going to have to audit in five years if we want to enforce, so we'll, we'll have an automatic audit burden when we're ready for, when we want to.
So, yeah, other than that, you know, I, you know, happy to present this to you. Staff worked on this for quite some time, we collaborated with multiple partners, subject matter experts, residents, businesses, tourism operators, engaged citizens, so I think that level of, you know, collaboration was, you know, one of the reasons why you saw so many letters in it. Great.
Did you have more? We do have a citizen comment, Ned Dalton, did you have?
So.
Oh, sorry.
Well, all ordinance are supposed to be for safety and welfare and whatever for the county. I think this one leaves the safety part out. If you drive out Highway 191 and those lights, streetlights, by the Shell Station and the Randy Iron Rock, you know, it would turn off the road. You have to watch the signs and pay the, pay to be able to get off the road. Now, we, you already have an ordinance to, any new construction has to be, have shielded lights on. And so what this ordinance is after, which to me like, is if people have lived here for a long time, have old houses, and they're going to have to change the light, or do whatever you do, take it off, do whatever. This, we have old people come to our house all the time, and I have some action lights in front, and they come on, and the people come, and they go off them, and they, and sometimes when the wind blows, they do stay on, so I try to turn them on when the wind blows, so they don't shine. But I know, I used to have an elderly sister that lived by herself, and on her porch, she had two lights be screwed in the light, in the socket up there. She had to wake up in the middle of the night, the light, one of those lights were out, she'd call me, and I'd have to put the light in for her, that's how she, that's how much she needed light. I don't know if she was scared, or if she just needed the light, I don't have any idea. But those things happened, and to me, this completely leaves the safety part out of it. The rest of it, I couldn't argue about, I don't know if it's going to bring more people or not. It may or may not, but the safety part is really bad. If you can't see, and maybe, maybe young people's eyes are better, mine must be better than they are now, and certainly they're not best, but if you need light to be able to move around. You know, I just, you need to realize you're having a public hearing for, well, I'd say something about it, because that, as far as I'm concerned, it should not be passed with all the options of making everybody change their lighting and everything. I don't agree with it at all.
Well, thanks, I appreciate your comments, and safety is definitely something that we're hoping to address, and keeping the light shining where we want the light, and not where we don't. I had another comment from Cindy Pickett.
Good evening. I'm Cindy Pickett, I live, I had a home in Spanish Valley for 11 years, and way back when, we. And way back when, we first moved in the area, you could still see the Milky Way crystal clear, and looking down into town was just a smudge of light. And now, there's quite a huge umbrella of light coming up out of the city, and the Milky Way just isn't there like it used to be. So it's really something close to my heart, because it's something I see, I look forward to, you know, I see it most nights. And I appreciate the comment about safety, because that is always a concern. But in this day and age, we have appliances that do shine down and shine down better than what they do now with just one bright bulb. So I think if we really promote the night sky compliant fixtures, it will work. There will be pushback, but it will work. What we have in the valley are a lot of these barn lights, that they're just, they're not, they don't really, they're not owned by the property owner, but they were put in so many years ago, and they are just always on. So that's something that needs to be addressed, too. I don't know if it's Rocky Mountain Power who runs these lights, or County Services that owns them, but that's something that needs to be addressed, because a lot of people complain about those, those really tall lights. And of course, GoBord's, too, but one of the things, because you are going to hear a lot from people, is to really double check on, there's a lot of lighting companies that say these fixtures are night sky compliant, but they're really not. But they want to sound like they're good and they're great. So when you do start referring people to these fixtures as something, just to educate and inform them, because that's some of the mistakes we had made in our community. People were buying night sky compliant fixtures, but they really weren't. You know, they were shining out, but instead of just down. So I really do appreciate all the work that council has made on this, and hope that it goes well. Thank you.
Mary?
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to adopt the proposed ordinance to approve the amendments to the Grand County Land Use Code, Section 2.4.11, 6.5, and 6.6, related to the outdoor lighting sign illumination standards, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Motion made by Mary McGann. Seconded by Terry Morse. Any discussion?
Yes.
Greg?
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to make a comment. I have lived without any street lighting, any external lighting, any safety lighting, any, any kind of external lighting for 14 years since I've been here, and I don't miss it, okay? What I've come to conclude is that they do make flashlights, so when I walk to the town council a half mile away, I carry a flashlight, because when I walk back, it's in the dark. And I have walked back in the dark because I forgot my flashlight, and the only reason I knew I was on the road was because I could hear the asphalt. And when I came to my road, which is dirt, I could see it because it was lighter than the asphalt, so I knew where to turn. Now, that's dark, because the sky was overcast, there was no light, okay? So I have lived with that, and I have adjusted to it, and I carry a flashlight all the time. So I don't have any problem with it. I endorse it, because I don't think we need a lot of lights that can be seen from the International Space Station. End of, end of what I have to say.
Thank you. Rory?
Sorry, did you want to go, Mary?
Oh, I will.
I just have a question for Zach. What are we going to do for the industrial side of this?
For industrial facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, again, if lighting is needed for, you know, safety, so for instance, your district preached out, concerned about how it impacted this facility, you know, the last thing that, you know, our office or you want to see happen is, you know, a lack of safety due to, you know, work that's of this nature. While they're talking about safety, you know, we'll address it, it's okay. Some of the consequences are all provided. Motion sensor lights are definitely exempt in here. So, you know, by all means, that's what's needed to light up a empty way to your house. You can leave those, you can install more. The intent behind this is to ensure that there is lighting at the levels that we need, where we need them, not where we don't. So, you know, there are a lot of design modifications, even of existing lights, that can be very cheap, immediate, to immediate intents and standards of this ordinance without compromising physical development. For instance, putting lighting low to the ground with shields on it, so that it illuminates the pathway that you're walking on, rather than glaring into your eyes for emitting light where it doesn't actually add to your visibility.
One other... One other question. There's a business in town that uses lights, how's this going to affect them?
Yeah, that's a great question. I, I don't anticipate that, you know, it would be affected, we could...
Who are you talking about?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's not, those lights aren't on structures, you know, this regulates, you know, physical development, that would be one, you know, one immediate response. I don't know, maybe legal counsel has something to say about that, in terms of how to...
I would like her to say something, so I can tell these folks what's going to happen to them.
I, I think that, you know...
What kind of fixtures are in those boats?
Not on the boats.
Are they on the highway?
Yes.
They're vehicle lights.
They're vehicle lights. Right.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I gotta figure there's some way to memorialize.
I just want you to say it, so I can...
I mean, I don't, I don't get to make that decision, but I think that there's probably a way to memorialize that.
Legal is silent on that at the moment, I'll have to look into that.
Do we get a motion on this already?
Yeah.
It's rock. No further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, or, is that an aye?
No.
All those opposed? Motion carries six to one with Rory Paxman.
I think we should make some disclosures here.
Oh. Since you brought it up in the discussion, would you...
Well, it's kind of hard, because I'd like to recuse myself, because I don't know what's going to happen with the light situation, and that is my business, and I do run for 45 minutes with lights on, and so that's why I'm...
I think concerning that is...
I would like to recuse myself, but also vote against it, so I don't know how you do it.
So I'll just, I'll just recuse myself.
Well, I think, I think the disclosure is, you can vote against it, and, and you'd say that you're with a business that relies on lights, and there you go.
Yeah, I think that one's enough of a conflict of interest that recusal is appropriate because of Kenyans by night versus a normal hotel ownership. That would be a disclosure issue, but given the potential impact to that business, which could be big.
Do we need to recount the vote, even though reconsider?
Did you vote against, but with my acknowledgement, did I do that?
What he did vote against, it's already been called, question is, should this be reconsidered if you're going to recuse yourself instead of vote against, which is what you...
Well, as long as I brought it up, that I may have an interest in it, or I'm, I think it clears my... Right?
I would like you to recuse yourself.
Okay, I'd like to recuse myself.
I will, I will recall the vote, unless, was there another?
Yeah, I'd just like to, well, but just to clarify, this is the first amendment presented.
Exactly.
All right, so, we're voting, revote, recount on the vote for the proposed ordinance as presented tonight, the updated version.
So Evan, you'll need a, you need somebody to make a, but you can't do it, because you're not on the prevailing side. So, make a motion.
Okay, I move to adopt proposed ordinance.
No, you have to make a motion to reconsider.
Oh, I need to, I make a motion to reconsider. The motion to adopt proposed ordinance as amended, to approve amendments to the Grand County Land Use Code, Section 4, 2.4.11, 6.5, and 6.6, related to outdoor lighting, sign illumination standards, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Curtis Wells. Should I ask for recusals now, or?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any recusals? All right, motion passes, six to zero with Rory Paxman recusing himself. Am I saying that word right? Thank you for that. Next up, consent agenda, items O, P, and Q. O, adopting proposed resolution, approving amendments on a replat for lots 23A and 24A in the White Horse subdivision located at Lipizan Jump. Item P, adopting proposed resolution, approving amendments on a replat for Phase 2 and 4 of Sorrel River Ranch located mile marker 17 on Highway 128. And item Q, approving application for retail beer license for the PRCA rodeo located Old Spanish Trail Arena on May 31 through June 2, 2019. Mary McGann.
I move to adopt consent agenda as presented and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Motion made by Mary McGann, seconded by Curtis Wells. Any further discussion? Jay Lynn?
I just think it's odd that we have resolutions for replats on the consent agenda. I mean, it calls for every council member's name on the voting record at the end. It just seems bizarre to me, so, I mean, they are kind of no brainers, but we haven't typically put them in the consent agenda, so what's the explanation for them?
Zachariah?
Sure. I can, I can address that. You are correct, we don't typically put replats into consent agenda, but in both of these instances, they're only replats because they're platted subdivisions already, but the lot lines that are being adjusted in each of them are so simple that we felt comfortable putting them on the consent agenda. They don't, you know, we just didn't think that it needed, you know, to be on the regular agenda. So if you want to pull them off, I don't have any problem with going through the, the particular changes. If you, if you'd like us to not do that ever again, that's understandable as well. We just felt like they were such minor changes that it was acceptable. Yeah?
Any further discussion? The motion stands? Was there a motion?
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Sir, Chair?
Yes.
So we, we published notice for the public hearing at five this week, it's a six, like our standard, so I'm hoping we could bump, if someone would consider bumping the public hearing before the session ends. Not sure if these folks are here for the public hearing, but I can make a motion.
Please.
I move to move the public hearing, item, agenda item T, to right now, before agenda item R.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. They're one or public. Zachariah, item T, public hearing, for your public comment.
Yeah, thanks Larry. Now we're not doing anything.
Okay, so we have in front of you a conditional use permit application for a campground expansion in Thompson Springs. This is the Ballard RV Park. I want to clarify right up front, the reason you are seeing this in a public hearing tonight, it is an accommodations-based development, and despite the fact that we are under a moratorium, this application was submitted prior to that moratorium going into effect. So that means this application was vested at the time that the moratorium was established, so that's why we can continue reviewing and you could approve it. So we're looking at seven acres, almost, on Highway 94 and Nutter Avenue out of Thompson. The campground expansion would add an additional 35 RV spaces, full hookups, to an existing 31 space campground. The Thompson Special Service District for Water has provided a letter stating that adequate water is available to serve the project, but that a new water meter will be installed as a requirement. The existing septic system would be replaced with a newly constructed and larger system to meet the state's health requirements, and all the new sites would be served by the new system. The planning commission approved with conditions this campground, those conditions being, or they recommended approval. And the conditions included were establishing no noise hours of 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM, establishing a no fire policy, and providing landscaping and screening in accordance with Section 6.4. So in the staff report, you've got, you know, all of the considerations for approval and, or denial or postponement, and without going through each one of those, we feel like this application has met the county's standards. I will note that the planning commission, so that recommendation about landscaping and screening, that was a staff recommendation, the planning commission did not include that recommendation in there, or that condition in their recommendation. That doesn't give us too much heartburn, but, but currently there, there is no proposal for landscaping and screening on the perimeter of this property, so... Let's see. If that's all I really need to go through with you, yeah, and, you know, it's been easy to work with, and the project engineer for this development, you know, has responded to all of the development review team's questions and change requests, and so we feel like it's ready for approval.
Please.
So if this were a project in Spanish Valley or somewhere in this, you know, part where we live, would, do you feel like planning commission probably would have recommended landscaping and screening?
It's hard to say. I don't want to speak for the planning commission, but that, you know, consideration of adjacent properties is why staff provides that recommendation in place.
Greg?
Yeah, I'm, I grew up, and I sit on the office door, not familiar with the air, there's nothing about it. Other than the existing RV park, the rest is just open, open right side. So I can't, I can't see any problems with this. From, from what I've seen, on the existing RV park, climbing trees and some other things, so, yeah, I don't, I don't have any problems.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I've sat through the, the planning commission meetings where this was discussed and debated and worked on, and I think that they've pretty much asked every question I would have asked and, and had answered, so I had a problem with either.
In the packet, there's a comment about establishing a no fire policy. What's the concern there?
We typically recommend that as a, as a policy at campgrounds. Just for...
Sounds like no fun.
You know, we, we recommend it to campground development... You know, we recommend it to campground developers for their own sort of property protection and consideration of, you know, fire sensitivity in this region. So that's the source of that recommendation. You know, we acknowledge that people staying in campgrounds are on vacation and not always thinking as sharp as they may help, and so, you know, we just feel like it's for the benefit of this community's fire protection to recommend it.
I will say that there are fire trucks in camps.
Any citizen comments? Anything else from the council?
You know, we've never met, I don't think, but I believe that you are associated with the project.
No?
No. Okay.
No, we haven't. I think I might use it.
Okay. So you're just here to observe?
And so the...
I don't know. 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 Is this just a public hearing?
Yeah, this is just a public hearing. It's a public hearing. You'd have to suspend the rules if you didn't make a motion. Right?
Yeah, and I'd like to weigh in on that. The planning department's public notice was slightly off in that it published the public hearing for 5:00 p.m. instead of our typical 6:00 p.m., and it also referenced the Planning Commission sub-council. That's not a big deal because code doesn't actually require you name the body that's going to hold the public hearing, so that's not a dispositive issue. But I do think that we should leave it open on this one, because our public notice wasn't quite right on.
Yeah. And I think unless it's too insensitive, we should always follow the rules.
I don't see any urgency in the further investigation.
So that being said, public comment will remain open until April 11th, 10th. And comments can be made through the council administrator's office or at council@grandcountyutah.net. Any other ways? Mail pigeon?
Smoke.
All right. Thanks for that.
Thanks.
That brings us back to Item R, calendar items and public notices. Ronnie's on vacation.
She is, and I really thank her because she did wrangle this packet and took good care of us before she took off and terrorism pitching in, so we're making it work. For April, oh, you know what, let's see, did I, I did mark these. Okay, so the week of April 8th, so next week is the BLM meeting regarding, it's not just regarding roads, it's regarding the travel plan, management plan out in Labyrinth Canyon and Dolores Triangle area. Then I believe Councilmember McGann mentioned earlier that the Uinta County Commissioners want to meet with you all, and it looked like three of you committed.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
The 16th is what we're trying to...
Uh-huh, April 16th. Two o'clock is what we talked about. They said they really probably thought they'd only need one hour, but they liked the two o'clock time to get in, get done, get out. But you guys don't have a Thompson meeting, Thompson Springs Fire meeting till four o'clock, so... So I didn't firm it up. What I, how I left it is I would talk with you all today and tell us what you want. Has to do with the Seapridge Road in the Booklets.
I'm good at two o'clock.
That's before the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's fine.
I mean, we could ask them to do three if we want to stack them back to back, or I don't necessarily want to rush them out the door because...
Yeah, I kind of like if we get that early, you have a little break too.
Okay, let's leave it at two.
So I will confirm, two o'clock. Great.
On the 16th?
April 16th, yeah.
And they said there might be some other people joining?
They did.
Maybe just kind of know.
Who?
Yeah.
Who else? Okay. Got it. And then that following week, the 22nd of April, is the audit taking place here in our council chamber, so that you know what's going on in there. The 25th, we have Canyon Country Partnership at Dead Horse Point this time, and that's at nine, and then one o'clock is the ALG meeting, but that's going to be in price. So that's what I've got for April, other than our study committee meetings are going on. Go ahead.
I will be gone over the Canyon Country Partnership, and I don't know Evan, if you're available, they mentioned they wouldn't mind meeting the Chair of the Grand County Council if you could make it.
Yeah, does that involve a bike ride too?
Yeah, it's going to be outside together.
Oh, you're all...
Sounds really fun.
I'll go too.
Sounds real fun.
Yeah, I should be able to do that, so, yeah, let me triple check.
It's the 22nd, Dead Horse Point.
Great.
Cool.
How shreddy are these guys?
Really? I was.
Are they going to be ripping the bikes?
They're going to be shredding?
I think there's probably a season again.
Some of them are, yeah.
Ruth, then there's no ALG meeting.
Oh, there's not? Scratch that?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it every other month, or?
No, they've been meeting every month. I'm not sure why they are meeting in the end.
No, no, no.
That's what I learned.
Cancelled, thank you.
All right, I put it on my thing, so...
Any other April changes, additions, corrections? Okay, let's move to May. Let's see, I show on May 10th, I wanted to point that particular study committee for the change of form of government, because our county attorney will have information from Morgan County about their process, because they're doing exactly what we're doing, except they're ahead of us. And we've invited Tooele County, who went through this recently, they went from a three-person commission to a five-person council member form, and we've been in, Christina especially has been engaging with them, and we invited them to the 10th or the 17th, we don't know yet, but the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Study Committee are who are willing to come out and talk to us. They've already presented to Morgan County, and they're just willing to do this, so it's a very good thing.
So that's going to be hoped on 10th will be Morgan County, is that the case?
Well, we don't know yet. So Morgan's not planning to come, it's just, I'll let Christina speak.
I can weigh in on that. I have been in, Morgan, of course, is the other county that, whose form of government is out of compliance with the four statutory forms. They are moving very fast, they have no drama, they have no, it's just not much of a process. They are going to be ready to put their optional plan forward on their November ballot, and they're not putting a lot of effort in, according to the county attorney, into that process. So I have determined that they're not that interesting to us. Tooele County went through a voluntary change in form of government, but went through this massive process, really impressive, and they have, I mean, their recommendations report's almost 200 pages long, their optional plan is super thorough, they have, they did the strategic plan, it was developed by an engineer that's out on the board, and so we have invited them, which was Morgan County's recommendation to come and talk with us about, as much as anything, strategic planning, how to go about this, and let's create an outline to help our study committee move forward in an efficient way.
So that's the 17th?
It's not confirmed yet.
Okay. In fact, we've given them some June dates too, so I, yeah. But I will say there are two April dates for this change of form of government, Study Committee meetings here, the 12th and the 19th, and they are going to be working on strategy, and they've already been sent this web log or whatever it was from Tooele County that has all their documents and their final recommendation and their whole process. I found that and sent that to them right away, so I don't know if they've been doing their homework and looking at it, or if they're going to, I don't know, but they seem very engaged and hungry for homework and information, they're really on this. I will say too that Gavin Anderson recommended that they try to get it on this November ballot, and I think there's some anxiety about how could they possibly do that, because it would have to be ready for print for the Clerk's Office, I think, in August, and they're only meeting twice a month, and I don't know that, I know that some people have a little bit of angst about that. And the normal county election is next, is 2020, so for what that's worth.
How expensive Chris is, if say they weren't ready for the November ballot, but we want to have it done before the Utah Legislature session. How expensive is it to stay doing especially in the county?
I think it has to be November.
You can't do it. You can only run a ballot initiative. The, I think the law requires it has to be submitted 65 days before the general election. And so, and I think the HB 224 requires it to run in a general election too, doesn't it?
It does.
I think it does, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know that, so that was not...
So, I mean, we...
If they could have it done, you could still get it done for the legislating session.
I did, you know, I did anticipate that that was a remote possibility, and so we did budget for it, but I guess what I'm saying is we don't have to run a countywide election, probably save $25,000, $30,000.
Oh, wow.
Well, I mean, actually, I'll take that back, because $10,000 of it, we have to pay no matter what, just to keep our election equipment, and so it'd really be the remainder. But typically, you know, we're, look at about $30,000 for an election altogether, and so, you know, we can make considerable savings on that by not running an election.
Oh, yeah, that would be the best. I just knew, I talked to Gavin quite a bit, and that was his concern, is that he thought it was really important to have it done before the legislating session in case House go to 27, that's what.
Which one's that?
The one that forces to only be a three-person commission.
You mean like if it gets brought back and passed?
And we have to be forced to go to a three-person commission.
But it failed.
It did this year, but Gavin's afraid that if we don't have that, and so he's, that's why he's...
It wasn't voted down, was it?
Failed committee.
Failed committee, yeah.
Which is worse than getting voted down.
I thought it ran out of line.
Well, yeah. I mean, I did anticipate the possibility, like I say, and so it's in the budget to do an election, but I think that that would be quite the rush, not to mention rather expensive. But it's not necessarily under our control, they have the option of moving that fast, I guess.
Yeah, I was just saying that was his concern, otherwise he thought there was no problem with us not doing the election until 2020. But that if we, we could shoot ourselves in the foot if we ended up, that they all, was brought back up and somehow made it through all four votes.
So this is a pretty political discussion.
Your meeting will automatically end in a few moments.
Decision...
Oh, good.
Thank you. Who are you?
That's funny. That doesn't close.
Let's just take that as a sign and move on and leave.
The call-in for the landmark?
Yeah, I think it's...
Two days ago.
Shall we move along then? So just a reminder, the Study Committee Chair or designee will be reporting to you guys once a month, so you'll know more closely, you know, when we get Tooele County to come visit the Study Committee, and forgive me if I say "we," but I'm very much engaged with them. Yeah, we will keep you apprised on that. Okay, on May 10th, excuse me, 15th, I see that Western Interstate Region is holding a conference in Spokane County. On May 23rd is our Open and Public Meetings Act training, and the 10:30 part starts with the State Auditors training about budgets for districts especially, but that includes county. And then the noon is pizza, and 12:15 is the Open and Public Meetings Act training. You can also get that training online and it counts, but they do expect council members to attend every year, as you know, because when the auditors are here, they ask about that. And then on...
When is that one again?
I caught your attention.
I was plugging the last date.
Oh, that'll be there.
May 23rd, and you'll begin to see some flyers here pretty soon.
Yeah, on that, I had a question, because, so that's the training that they hosted at the Grand Center, right?
It is.
But then we also did one out of the Water District.
Oh, yeah, one or the other.
And I did that one, but the auditor, some of the auditor's office was telling me that that didn't count, and Dana Van Horn was kind of arguing with him. I never really got clarification on that, so maybe I'll work with you on that.
I've always thought it counted, so...
It counted for me one year.
Yeah, he was saying it didn't, and Dana was kind of like, well, ignore him, it counts, but it's like, well, it's the State Auditor's talk.
Wow, it's probably just different individuals with the auditor, that's the first I've ever heard of it all these years.
Doesn't he give the same exact training?
The training was actually hosted by the, like, let's see, the Special Service Districts have a state association, right? It was by their director, so it wasn't by anyone from the auditor's office.
Well, I don't, I'm not aware that we, almost all of our open meetings trainings are, what's his name?
LeGrand Bitter, Utah Association of Special District.
Yeah, that's who it was.
Yeah, it's the same guy doing the same, it's abbreviated training compared to the open meeting training.
We'll get some clarification then.
Well, we've never had anybody else that I can remember doing our open meetings training.
No, so here's the difference, maybe...
The training at the Grand Center, there were members from the auditor's office, I remember.
Right, there's two sections. We didn't always have the auditor training, we've brought that in in the last six, seven years or whatever, but the auditor training, and then there's the open public meeting training, and the State Auditor does one, and the Utah Association of Special Districts does the other. So maybe where the rev was, was the auditor training wasn't provided at the Grand Water Meeting, maybe?
No.
Because LeGrand Bitter is the only one who provides that.
I don't think there's one out of, uh, Water District next year. I don't know, I thought my law office took it to come like that.
I'll figure it out.
Maybe he was talking about the other training that it didn't qualify for, because I know that they do want the council to...
Every year?
I don't know what the period is.
Every year? I believe, I believe the law says...
Because I went to that other one my first year, so...
I believe the law says they want every board member to attend within the first year, and that you have to attend once within a term. The open meeting training is what I'm talking about, not the budget part. I'm not even sure there is a requirement for the budget part. I haven't heard about that, I don't know, but it would make sense, especially with all this auditing going on.
So do they have that more than once a year?
Just once a year, but you can also get the open and public meeting training by, through an online that does count.
I'll have to do that, because I'm, I'm...
Which is harder.
I'm going to be out of town.
I can think of what.
I'm just, I don't even...
You don't get pizza, but I can...
It wasn't that hard.
It wasn't that hard, no. And they let you take it on once.
Oh, jeez.
So I have sent that link to the Study Committee recently, I'm happy to get that to you all again, if you want it. You want the link? Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to, no, because I won't be available for that.
Okay. All right, shall we move along?
Yes.
Thank you. Employment opportunities. Oh, yes.
Ruth, just one more thing while we're on May. I just want to let everybody know, I'm going to be gone from the 10th of May to the 26th of May. So I've got three meetings, the P and Z meeting on the 14th, and then the Rec Department on the 15th, and on the 16th, there's one other one, I think, yeah? No, just those two, I believe, that, that I'll, oh, yeah, just those two, if anybody wants to collect those.
That'd be great.
If they get close, I...
If not, they probably won't.
Planning Commission and the Rec District.
And those are...
The Planning Commission's on 14th of May, and the 15th of May is the Rec District, it's seven o'clock at City Council, and the P and Z is here at five. I think I can cover you on that, but I'll let you know when we get closer. All right, that's great, I appreciate it.
Any other changes or anything for May? Okay. Employment opportunities, we're pretty well staffed up. We have the standing corrections officer for the Sheriff's Office, patrol deputy, and dispatch. Those all close April 30th at five o'clock.
And no kitchen person.
Huh, don't know.
Did they fill it or just finally take it off?
I do not know.
That was ridiculous.
I don't know, might have got filled now that you guys started talking about it.
Funny.
Well, we did, it got bumped up a little.
Okay, so board vacancies, we are still looking for the Budget Advisory Board's citizen. We do have an application for the one vacancy on the Historical Preservation Commission. We need one for the Housing Authority, if you guys know of anybody that could, that would be helpful. Arches Special Service District has two vacancies, they have to reside within that small district. One vacancy, and we have received one application for the Recreation Special Service District, and one vacancy, but no applications for Transportation Special Service District. Oh, sorry, there are two, two different term-ending dates on transportation, one ending December 31st of 2019, and one ending at the end of 2022. So there you go.
Ruth, I have a question.
Sure.
May I share?
Please.
On the Arches Special Service District, how many people even live in that district?
Gosh, maybe, it's less than 10, it's probably six or seven, maybe Mr. Paxman... Maybe Mr. Paxman can answer that? I don't, I don't know.
How many live in the Arches Special Service District?
There's only two private properties out there.
What do you guys even do? What does that?
For the water and sewer area.
Yeah.
It's required to be there. We have to. Functional district.
Can't somebody take one for the team and be on the district?
It's not the most active board.
There isn't a lot going on, there's only two properties.
Go to one.
Right now.
One meeting a year.
The tailings pile gets on maybe, so.
Okay, moving along, special events, you can see there, some pending, some permitted. April's gonna be busy as always. Anything you need to, any questions or anything? We are still, let's see, did we hire in the travel council yet? I don't know that we've gotten someone hired, so I haven't met the person that took Michelle Hill's place. I can't remember. I don't think so. I was over there today, and the desk was empty. Pardon? Mary Lou Lopos.
Yeah, where she.
She took Callie's place, administrative assistant in the TRT. Oh, Callie, then Kelly. There's been some turnover, but we're ramping up again. There's some requests for bids and requests for proposals, one is for eight light poles out at the arena, as well as the electrical connection, and then we have heavy equipment for the road department, looks like they're looking for an older, two thousand and sixteen John Deere three-ten SL Baco, closing April fifteenth, and then requests for proposals for fireworks, professional display for our Fourth of July. This is another thing Bryony has been managing beautifully, because there's a lot, a lot of steps before we can even get to this place. Anyway, it's, we bumped up the budget, you might recall, to twenty-seven thousand dollars, that's the max, and it's an eighteen-minute continuous period that we're looking for that would include a false finale and a grand finale, and that closes, does that close at, um? I can't see the closing date, sorry, can't tell you right now.
I know with that, the fireworks, the chamber is going to be.
Oh, April nineteenth.
Doing a thing at the ballpark this year, big event there, try to get some vendors, dunk, dunk, dunk tank to dunk the mayor, maybe we'll get Christine's lawn.
Be along line.
Dunk the turn.
Be along line, yeah, that's right.
That is, we just keep coming back.
Make the target bigger.
I would not.
Okay, that's all I've got.
Great. Let's see, so that brings us to. The item S, strategic plan progress, and as I pass this over to Mr. Morse to lead us through this, I'm gonna hand you the chair and step out of the room for a minute.
Okay. I'd like to make this as quick as we can, but I, in going over this whole thing, it's really clear to me that there, there are three people who, who really sort of signed up for all the items on this, and, and it's obviously way too much for three people to do, and way too much for probably us to get done, you know, in any sort of reasonable timeframe. So what I'm going to throw out there for people to discuss or get feedback or input on is, it would be interesting to me to see everybody pick maybe two items from this total list that they think that they can put in motion and/or get accomplished by a date certain, preferably by the end of the year, so that we can actually move through some of these things and, and get them off the, off the list, and, and, you know, replace them with other things that are equally as important that may be coming up. So, I'm open to input on, on how to approach this from this point on. What I did was I took the, the goals that, that were set, and then I tried to break them down a little bit into action steps, so that, that, you know, became a little bit more manageable to see how we might approach it or whatever. In any case, I would be open for comment on suggestions on how to proceed. So, just, you know, in reviewing mine, just for some updates, a lot of these are already, you know, in the works, so, on the first page, develop positive relationship with San Juan County. They're currently reviewing proposed ordinances for that development and kind of going over them, and so I think what we need to do at our next meeting is to an extended invite to, to host those commissioners in here, do a joint meeting, or, or to send some representatives down to their meeting and kind of do a formal, public olive branch extension, since, you know, after their elections and their new commissioners. So that's something that there's still an action item on. Monitor SCIC activities ongoing, the health, the operating agreement with the Southeast, Southeastern Utah Health Department's finished, developing the relationship with Senator Romney, that's ongoing, working with Arches and Keanland, superintendents to help alleviate congestion, that'll start rolling out soon, working with City of Maub to explore opportunities to consolidate efforts. We've got the Budget Advisory Board working on some of those things, and I've been in, had some good conversations with the clerk auditor about areas to, to begin in that, so I feel good about that.
Sweet.
The UDOT, work with state and UDOT in support of Maub bypass, these, those transportation planning meetings that's happening with the city and the county and UDOT, I, I think that's, you know, where that's taking place and ongoing. Let's see, nurture relationships with CIB board members. Jay Lynn's the SEU AOG rep, and so she's getting some more experience with that, but that's another ongoing thing. The BLM moving out west has gone cold since we've, the previous secretary of the interiors resigned, so I don't have any updates on that. The Grand County lands bill's kind of something that Curtis's office has thrown out there, and he's, I think what he's looking for is for us to send a message back and say, yes, we want to do that. We know how heavy that can get, so we should discuss that, you know, probably before we signal any interest, I would think. The Forest Service Management Plan Revision Process is ongoing, coordinate with Sitla on plans for development of land adjacent, so that's something I haven't acted on formally. Sitla held a, a board meeting in Grand County last year, and there weren't any council members in here. I attended and just gave them a greeting and a, you know, a welcome. That's something that I haven't seen the county really formally involved on, I'm sure planning and zoning's, you know, may have been involved in that, but that's something that could use some, like, better defined deliverable. Mary's worked hard for, oh, I'm sorry, the Umtre project funding, so there's a lobbyist that the western states use, that I get information from, that I worked with when we were advocating for PILP payments, and he, one of his big success stories was getting a large chunk of federal funding for the Energy Solutions Cleanup Project, so I have some of that information I can share with the council, and we would essentially be hiring him to, you know, to lobby for more project funding, but we would need to decide what that would look like, and Mary, you're involved in that, so that's something we could talk about and review. Build teamwork with elected officials, so the idea there was, the leadership meetings that's held in the council chambers, a lot of counties, when I was campaigning for UAC president, they have elected officials meetings every week, mostly where there's commissions, because they're in the building every day, but all the elected officials meet, I think that's something that we should get scheduled, and that's something we can probably set up, have added to the agenda soon, so there's work on that. County and city collaboration on land use codes, that's in the works. USU support for origination of new campus programming, curriculum fundraising, there's been some progress there. Right now, they're firming up a private donation for the, the campus itself, and then we did receive over a million dollars in funding for extension, so that's ongoing. Develop lobbying strategy for county needs and state legislation in UAC, and so this is some, that's something that we've kind of tried to tackle on a per-cycle basis, but I think kind of where we're at there is, is you can put all your eggs in the UAC basket for lobbying, but a lot, the successful counties at the legislature usually go outside of UAC and, and contract their own lobbyists that are more focused on certain issues like either transportation, or, you know, road funding or things like that, so that's something that we could see some more action items on, too. So to finish up, Terry, the, the things that, that are in my basket, I, I don't necessarily think they need to be passed to someone else, but there are a few more things that, that this is good, that you brought this up, because there's things that I need to have added to the agenda to, to get, you know, some more of these things moving, so that's all I have to comment on that.
Great. Sounds like things are going well on that.
Part of the strategic plan, then, that's good.
Curtis, just while we're, super briefly, do you know if there might be other counties or organizations or groups that would, in some of those TRT conversations, that it might be worth sharing, sharing a lobbyist or something like that on?
Yeah, yeah. There's a, there was a group of counties, Jay Lynn participated in the discussion also at a, at a UAC conference, where there was kind of a whiteboard session about the TRT law, and it was good to get a good idea of which counties are interested in seeing some amendments there. I think that, I want to be careful what I say, I think that there's definitely, once this audit finishes on TRT and those results come out, I think that there's a, a good likely, a high likeliness of us getting something done on that law that doesn't necessarily involve a lobbyist. And so, but, you know, to answer your question, there's definitely some counties that we can be working with on opportunities there.
I wonder if that would be something worth expanding a timeline on or something?
What do we have, do we have that in here?
We just had it as an ongoing deadline, but that was, it kind of lumped all those legislation goals together, and I think that, yeah, that after that audit comes out, the iron will be hot, you know?
Yeah. So, I mean, the, the audit is, is almost done.
Okay.
And they did provide me with the first draft, although made it very clear that it was highly, highly protected at this point, and maybe you guys could request it and get the first draft, but I think they're pretty dang close to being done, and so I can't really say anything about it, because they swore me the secrecy on it for now, but I'm sure it'll become a public document as soon as they publish it.
I had Tara in Ruth's office do some research on statute in other states as it pertains to transient taxes, and so I'm kind of collecting a, you know, some data and supporting information for a case, so that we can provide a frame of reference, or frames of reference, outside of just the way we have it situated in this state, and so that's stuff that's ongoing, but I think, I think, obviously, getting as far out ahead of it as possible is the wisest thing to do.
Great.
And we did have a, we did have a draft bill by our House Representative that was kind of floated out there last year before the audit was announced, and he's working with leadership, and he's in leadership, you know, to, to articulate the reasoning and the rationale for it, so, you know, I think it's positive.
Great. Yeah.
So, Curtis, would you be willing to give me a copy of what's ongoing and what's been done and that sort of thing, then I can just.
Yeah.
Change that. I can't change it on my computer here right now, because it's on a different file. The way, the way, you know, my recommendation for kind of going about that is, is to not narrow the items so pointed in the strategic plan, you know, leave it, you know, lobbying strategy or lobbying priorities or legislative priorities, but, but to make sure that we're actually, you know, being very specific about what we're working on when we hold those discussions. To be honest with you, you know, we've yet to really kind of figure out how we chew through that stuff. Yeah, no, I, no, I understand that, I mean, and that's why, that's why what I'm trying to get to is, is, is.
Oh, it is on here, TRT reform.
Yeah, how we, how we, you know.
Yeah.
Bite into it, you know, and.
Okay.
That's all. Well, why don't, just to close that loop, why don't we assign a, a deadline, you know, for a, a draft of the two thousand and twenty legislative agenda for, let's say, five-one or, or the first meeting in, in May, and, and, you know, we'll make that a running item, but we can start with a rough legislative agenda pretty early, you know?
Yeah.
And that'll give me some accountability to make sure and get that on the agenda for review.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, and then Jay Lynn and, and Mary, what, do you have some input on what you think we ought to be doing, or?
One of the things, you know, I have not, is like, we have the accountability over here, is like Airport Director, Council, I mean, and yet, so.
I mean, any of this can be changed, it's all flexible, I just kind of made some of it up as I went.
I just.
So I've been talking.
I don't know how to overlook, see it.
Yeah.
Like, what do you do, you know? My name's on there, but yet I feel like a lot of it is.
So, Mary, like, a lot of the airport stuff, I bet Taco would like the BLM on fifty acres and that kind of stuff, so I've been working a little bit on that.
So should we put your name on that?
That'd be great.
Yeah, let's put, let's take my name off that, put Rory's on that. And then Greg, you're on the.
Yeah, I can do the drainage.
You can do the drainage, because you're on that board, and I don't, you know, because otherwise it was like, how was I supposed to know what was going on with this? I think I was just getting the job, because it was at the end of the meeting, and it all happened, that's not, thought out. Affordable housing, economic law, and recreation park. Well, I think maybe both Evan and I should be on this, this, the target updates and general plan, because like, I, I work on the Housing Task Force, he's on the Planning Commission. The drainage plan is taken care of, it's talked about twice, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm.
Or just, or just get rid of this. Strike it.
Where's that?
The trans, targeted update of the general.
General plan, right.
Affordable housing, economic law, recreation parks plan, drainage plan.
Oh, drain, down there, point C, yeah.
The whole thing is like, what's the, what's plan of progress supposed to be?
Like edits to the actual document?
Yeah.
I'm just stretching.
Okay, do you have a good idea?
Well, no, these are just, these are just, you know, like, infrastructure plan, you know, I mean, it's like, do we have a plan that we're thinking about for capital facilities or, you know, for.
Right.
Transportation, or do we have a plan, well, the drainage plan, okay, is it really in place?
Well, the drainage plan, okay, is it really in place or do? So it's all, but we know it's going to cost $50 million, so we're not doing anything about it or, you know?
Well, we are.
What I'm just saying is that, that if, if we can define what we have going, then we can figure out where we are and what we need to, to do to, you know, to make it, make it happen, that's all.
So the capital facilities plan usually is rolled in with our impact fee analysis, which I think we're going to try to get rolling this year, um, so we can make the deadlines. Kind of a lengthy process. So it'd be good to get going on it now. So I think, um, that's probably something we'll be able to get to this year.
That's on my list.
The, um, and stormwater, we are moving along with it. You know, we got the inspection done on the first phase of Jackson Street. And if we can continue to leverage the money that we've put forward on matches, then Bill's going to just keep rolling with it. But it really kind of depends on whether or not we can leverage the money that we put up. And so that's certainly happening and Bill's pretty aggressive about trying to move that forward and get the Phase Two to the CIB, um, I believe in June.
So where are we at with that?
I don't know if we want to take bite-sized pieces here, you know? Rather than having this standing agenda item of the whole plan, but kind of like each week be like, all right, where are we at?
Yeah, well, what I was trying to, to suggest was that everybody look at this and say, okay, where can I be most valuable in helping getting this stuff done? And then coming back in another meeting and saying, well, look, you know, we, this has been done or this is ongoing and I'm on top of it, or this is something I can take on and make it happen, or this is something I'm not interested in. You know, because, and, you know, when looking at it, I just feel it's, it's too much for, you know, three people to be taking on and, and, you know, maybe it's not. Maybe Jay Lynn and Mary and Curtis say, hey, you know, I, we can run with this, you know? But I, you know, I think I'd like to see it spread out a little bit, so, you know, or, or.
And even maybe short.
Yeah, I mean, it can be, or you can take stuff off it or add stuff or change the dates or whatever we want to do, but, but I think that, you know, I mean, like Curtis, you, you know, your list sounds like a lot of it's under control, um, you know? And, and so, you know, maybe we don't have to fool around with that one so much. But I guess what I'm trying to say is let's, it would be great if we could all look at it and see where our interests lie, what we, where we can be the most effective and then come back and say, hey, you know, I can do this and I can start it by X date and I think I can get it done by 2021 or 2020 or 19 or 18 or whenever it is. You know, and, and not try and beat it to death, you know, item by item, uh, you know, right now in this real time, because I think it's going to take, you know, some thought and, and commitment on the part of people in the council to, to sign up for it. And it may not all get signed up for, you know? And at the end of the day, we may have to say, okay, well, that's something that we just have to put off until next year or whatever.
A lot of that stuff, it's on my list that is needing action. Just need some, like a Genesis read, just to get us through this. So there's a few of those things, try to have those in the next agenda for us to get those going. I may have like a better idea after that. I'm sure some of them.
Sure.
I can play two of the others also.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that's, yeah. So I guess what I'm saying is next time we talk about this, let's come back with, with specifics of.
It like, looks like Rory's going to do the airport, Gray's going to do the drainage. I could certainly do the US port, that's the board I'm on now. So that's, you know, it's like, but a lot of these, my name was on, I did not fill.
So can I make a suggestion?
Please.
As I look at this, I mean, I see things that of course are already done or well underway. Do you see one, one paragraph that I think to me is staff, department heads and, and men to do? So I guess what I would like to see happen is, is this already in a, wow, do you have this in a Word document that we could edit?
It is in Word, yes.
Because I would like to have one more column that just, I could put notes in and maybe come back to counsel with that. And if everybody else had their own notes, we could just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look and see what makes sense and what doesn't.
So it's in a Word document?
So, so this redo of it is Terry's doing.
I'll just send you.
But I, I'm happy to send that out to everybody.
Yeah, I'll just send you my Word document, Ruth, and you can reformat it.
Well, I think you did, I think we have it.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah.
Got it in the packets.
It's in the package, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
Maybe highlight the ones that are already done.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So this one is slightly revised from what you all adopted, but, I mean, it's, just, just to say, it is a living document then.
Am I taking the chair back?
Yeah, you've got it.
Chris, sorry.
So I just wanted to, um, kind of bring up, there's a component in there that has to do with the needs analysis, and so that's nearly done. And so I just wanted to bring that up as, you know, just getting the plan done is only part of the battle. And so, um, just sort of wanted to prompt that council to consider discussing the next steps, which would be the act, action steps that go with that. And potentially also considering, you know, that I think that there's sort of a missing piece, which is a, really a, a study of the organizational structure, which, um, fits in really quite well with the needs analysis, but, um, as far, I, you know, when we've got 14 direct reports under Ruth or whatever it is, you know, we, that's obviously, you know, um, far more than should ever be. And if your organizational structure is kind of on the wrong footing from the very top, then that means the whole thing needs to be restructured. And if we're talking about, uh, new, um, space, new buildings, you know, I think that we would want to design those around organizational structure that makes sense. And so to me, that's kind of a missing piece. I've done a fair bit of research on organizational theory, enough to know that I think that it's probably something that we should consult for. And there are, you know, people who, that's their job and they go to school for it, um, and it can be fairly complicated. But I'd hate to launch into the process of designing a new building using this organizational structure to define how the space is laid out. And so that's kind of an issue for me, but I think that also the organizational structure really actually limits our ability to implement a strategic plan because usually the, the strategic plan is implemented by the CEO, the CFO, they work together with the board. And that's sort of like what the board in these two top-level positions do, is implement strategy. But I think the way that the organization is set up right now, we're too inefficient for those people to really spend much time on, on bringing strategy to fruit. It's very difficult to find the time. And so, um, I think it's worth considering, um, you know, if we're going to talk about budget amendments for other things, to potentially talk about getting that organizational study done and see, you know, what potential efficiency increases can be attained by reorganizing the structure of this organization. So I just wanted to bring that up as a component because even though the needs analysis is nearly done, it's just really the starting point of that whole process. Well, that's true. I mean, that's a component of it. And I think that, um, you know, there's, I guess there's really two main scenarios. One would be, you know, if, uh, if there are commissioners that were full-time administrators, that would certainly affect what kind of organizational structure we would want to lay out. But otherwise, it would be, you know, something more probably along the lines of a, a best practice corporate structure. So, yeah, it's tough to deal with everything being in limbo.
I don't see any other way to do it.
Well, I mean, to a degree, though, an organizational study, if we did it, and even if we didn't take action on it, it would still be highly informative to the study committee. Well, typically, um, the form of government doesn't actually really address the organizational structure except for the council or commission. And our form of government does a tiny little bit with regard to calling out that, um, you know, professional and competent staff will administer the day-to-day functions. But besides that, there is no call out for organizational structure in our form of government at all. And so, um.
Is there a way to do it, sorry, is there a way to do it where there's some flexibility in that?
Yeah, like, what would the organization look like for Option A or Option B?
I think that they can, yeah, I think that, you know, the study committee certainly, I believe, has the capacity to sort of lay down organizational structure if they wanted to. I don't think that that's typical in the form of government, though, because we want to leave it open to whoever ends up being the boss. To, to, um, to make those kinds of decisions. You don't want to really lock it down in your form of government. And so to me, I mean, regardless of whether it's a commission or a council manager, whatever, I still think that the study of what would be most efficient from the executive side is going to be valid, whether it's a commission or a council manager form of government. It's just that the, the very upper echelon of that executive power will, you know, either be a manager or commissioners.
There may be a way to do this simultaneously, too. You know, Tuella's process was very public oriented. They held many public meetings and got a lot of public input, and it could be pretty clear early on what people want. And so I think we should keep it on our radar and revisit it. Maybe we can do it together simultaneously.
And so I would just, you know, I, like I said, I think that it's applicable no matter which form of government is chosen. And I'm not saying that we should necessarily try to implement before a decision is made by the voters, but given how long everything takes in government, you know, by the time we get a study done and we get through the process of working on a lot of these issues, probably be decided by then. And so it's, you know, it's always one of those things where you think you've got to wait because it's not time for, to do it, but then we just end up being late on it.
Because a lot of this is the timing. I mean, the study process could take two years. The county is losing a lot of money and morale in this building, and it's sort of coming to a head sooner than we hoped. And so I think that you're going to see staff starting to pressure council to take the spacing issue seriously and to start moving forward with the plan. You know, if we're waiting two whole years to sort of study this organizational structure that's going to help inform the building design, it's just way too long.
But they can have it to, I remember there was something about one year, the study committee.
Our deadline is 2020, so.
But I think there's got to be at least a year transition period, you would think. Otherwise, it would be impossible to run elections because you'd be having an election on the form of government, but you wouldn't be able to institute that form of government without giving yourself another year to actually run another election to get people on there because you, it would be impossible for me to run an election on a form of government that hasn't even been chosen by the voters yet. And so if we wait till the end of 2020 to run this ballot question on the form of government, we would have to have another year in this form of government.
Yeah.
In order, in order to make the transition, because I, that's the only way that I would be able to run an election, to put those new, that new form of government into office.
My two years was referring to the study process. Which has to be complete right separate from.
So, um, my, uh, I'm a little bit surprised, or I guess disappointed to hear that they won't have the question on the ballot in November, but I understand.
That they might.
That there's some documentation that you're office needs by August, but is that the county plan itself or, I mean, what, how do those timelines fit with the county plan being submitted to the county attorney and being approved?
Well, the question.
Say that is, like, in my mind, if you had that election this November, that puts us on a natural cycle for 2024 elections, and it seems like, you know, we're at that point where, uh, you know, I guess that makes sense to me.
Well, I, yeah, I'm not saying that they can't do it, and I don't know if they've said they are not going to do it this year, but, um.
Keep in mind that you guys have a role, too. So the study committee does their thing, which is pretty epic. It goes to my office for review, which hopefully wouldn't take that long. And then the council has to handle it as well, and there are public hearing requirements. And it's, it's a whole process for you guys as well before we can get the issue to Chris.
But then there's four public hearings the county council has.
Yeah, that's my recollection.
I just, yeah, and I guess, so what I'm saying is, is, um, I don't necessarily think it's healthy for them to be hearing from the county that you need to speed this up so it's clean, but I don't think that it's appropriate for them to be hearing you need to slow down and chew through this really slowly. Because some of us, you know, do feel, you know, like there's a handful of options and, and, I mean, we've all got different opinions, but I'm just saying, um, I would, I would hate to see the study committee be persuaded to, you know, slow down because to me, it just makes the timelines a bit risky, but it's on my call.
Well, to get back to the organizational thing, I think, I, I mean, I, I tend to agree with Chris. I think we ought to get that in process because the building's going to be the building and, um, you know, if it's going to be designed efficiently and, and it's designed on, on what we have now, what we have now is not going to be that different than what we're going to end up with unless it's a three, you know, person deal, you know?
You know, the, our neighbors to the south that have a three-member commission, they have a county manager that they delegate, you know, things to who acts a lot like who. So there's, we're just going to be speculating completely until we get what they're.
Well, yeah, and even on the Wasatch front, in those big counties that still have Well, yeah, and even on the Wasatch front, in those big counties that still have three commissioners, you know, they've still done the, you know, a lot of work to organize their structure in, you know, a very sort of corporate best-practice manner, where they have a finance department, they have a personnel department, they've structured it in a way, and to me, that needs to happen regardless of what the form of government ends up being.
Yeah, exactly.
And so, I, I, you know, I think that the more information we can provide, you know, third-party independent information to the study committee, the better they, off they are. And, you know, and I, and I don't think it really necessarily has to have, the study doesn't have to have much to do with the form of government, it has to do really with the, the administrative hierarchy, and the way that, you know, we would take various offices and departments, and group them in, together in a building, so that the workflow makes sense with how they work together, and to figure out, you know, what kind of structure would exist, whether it's under a manager or commissioners, doesn't matter which, but what is the structure going to look like that's efficient? Because I don't think that it would be a good idea to carry through with our organizational structure, because I think it's kind of just evolved over time without any real serious consideration to best practice and organizational theory. And we've kind of moved, you know, into a high-growth period without modernizing the organization to meet the needs of a fairly busy community. Yeah, that's what I think, and, and so, you know, I would certainly encourage the council to consider that, and I think it would harm us with the information we need to move pretty, pretty quickly, when, you know, when the time is right. And I don't know exactly what that time is going to be, we've got a lot of balls in the air, but.
So should we get together some kind of RFP for a organizational study this year? And I know we didn't budget for it, but if it's, I don't want to postpone the office space even longer, and if this seems like a necessary step before then, should we?
Well, I think that we do need to have a discussion about interim plan, regardless of what we do for the medium term. And so, because I think that there are some immediate needs that need to be dealt with in almost sort of like an emergency-style manner, to tell you the truth.
That's not a discussion for tonight, is it? Or is?
Not the organizational structure, but, yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's gotten to the point where it's hard for, hard for me to say. All right. But, you know, I, I'll try to put some together, but I think that probably the first step, if I were to recommend creating, you know, doing a budget amendment and, and an RFP, before we try to draft an RFP for the design of any building, that we should probably do the organizational study first.
I wouldn't argue against that, that seems to be proper planning. So, it looks like a bunch of head nods to, let's get an RFP for that together. And then if there's some kind of interim plan that we need to do in the meantime, if we can wait two weeks, and let's get it on the next agenda. And as long as we're opening the budget, let's also look at an RFP for space out of this year's design.
Well, we can discuss, yeah, there's actually quite a few, I think, budget amendments besides these that we'll have to deal with, and, I mean, the, the state auditor is actually wanting us, and probably all entities, to do mid-year budget amendments, as opposed to waiting to the end of the year, which usually means that by the time you do your budget amendment, you've already gone over budget. So, it, it does make sense to do mid-year, just plan on doing mid-year budget amendments so that we keep up on changing needs.
So do you want to bundle those all together in one big?
Yeah, and I think that I probably should call a meeting with the budget advisory board, and we can start discussing.
Sounds good.
Needs across the, all the offices and all the departments.
Great. It sounds like we've moved on from the strategic plan into future considerations. Larry Ellerton, right, has been waiting for a meeting, and I just wanted to, he was here when Representative Curtis was here, and so, I want to give you a minute to check in.
I will be quick, because I know you've had a long day. But I did want to follow up on the congressman's tour-through here, and just reiterate and strengthen the fact that we are very interested in working with Grand County in terms of accomplishing some of the things that you want to do, and that meaning that bringing together people on various issues and trying to find resolve. The one issue specifically that was mentioned as you were discussing your strategic plan, obviously, was, I think I heard it right, that there is an interest, I know you didn't take official action, in possibly attempting to emulate the Emery County bill and a Grand County bill. Did I hear that correctly, or not?
Well, no, I would not signal myself speaking.
I wouldn't blame you for saying that.
But, but there's been kind of light discussion around it, so I think what I was trying to say is, is that the council is interested, we need to have that discussion.
Okay, and, and the only thing I would say to that is, is that I think it would be a good thing to do. There are interested citizens out there, I talked with some today, who talked with me about that very thing. And, and I would just say that it's something that requires a lot of collaboration. It's a good process, if you go through that and include all of the interested parties, that's part of the process. Emery County, actually, 20 years ago, hired a public lands, they created a public lands council, and hired a public lands specialist. And they've been working on it for that long. I would suggest that you shouldn't plan to work on it that long, but it will take some time in bringing everyone together that has an interest in, in the public lands. Research involving BLM, what their current plans are, their RMPs, and so forth. But anyway, I'm interested in working with you to that degree. That's, that's the job that the congressman has given me, is to work with rural issues and public lands, and then give him advice on it, so I would have interest in following this with you.
One of the other things that we discussed with Congressman Curtis was finding a way that we could get TRT tax on federal campgrounds, BLM and Forest Service. And I know that's something we're very interested in.
We add that on the list of things to follow up on.
Yes, that's one, I think that would come, would be a higher priority, almost, than the public land.
Of course, the TRT is a state and a county impose, quite honestly. The state gives you the authority, but the county actually creates the tax. And so, the question would be whether or not you can have the authority to tax something involving the federal. I understand.
Big moves for our county, because there are large in the forests and camps as well.
There's also a lot of just open camping that occurs in your county.
Dispersed, yeah.
And, yeah, dispersed, excuse me. Anyway, I've taken more time than I should, but thank you for what you do. I, for one, have a real interest in what goes on in Grand County. I would just add that I think I was here at one of your first meetings of this created council, when I was working with Utah Power and Light. We happened to be down here, and I was here with a gentleman by the name of Lauren Morris, Morse, excuse me, who was the district manager here, I was the area manager, and had him down here, so, that's been a few years ago. Anyway, good luck to you and your endeavors moving forward.
Thanks, well, thanks for being here and, and being a presence, appreciate it, for sure.
The last time I left early because there was a snowstorm. I'm counting on the fact that the sun's shining right now.
Yeah.
Or that it's only a rainstorm.
Great, any other future considerations? Any need for closed session? I would inter, look at you go, you got your bags packed, hat on, one foot out the door. Doesn't sound like it.
So, well, I guess Chris and I will discuss it, and.
I think we need to meet first.
Good.
Well, in two more weeks, you got my evaluation.
Just, just for, I just think we need to reiterate the importance that anything that happens in a closed session is not discussed outside closed sessions.
Yeah, of course.
But it's been, I, I'm sure something I said was shared in the last closed session. I have no evidence, but I have some pretty good anecdotal, and I've heard that other council members have been talking about things that happen in closed sessions, outside closed sessions with other people, and in them, it's against the law. So, because someone knew something like that in the closed session, you should work on it.
Is that a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
All right, I call this meeting adjourned at 6:57. Thank you, everyone. Timmy and I can go home? Uh, I've been here for 30 seconds.
You may, yeah.
I am going to be doing Ruth's schedule review. But Mary didn't.